This is Mayor Oaks. I now call this meeting to order. Vice Mayor Robertson has a motion.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion that Kim Cormier be appointed as Acting Clerk of Council for the recording of the proceedings of Council in its work session and regular meeting of April the 8th, 2021, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of Council members at quorum consideration and voting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like a second then.
Right, Councilman Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Beauregard needs to call the roll.
She's running up and getting the power.
Mr. Rosenberg, can you?
Certainly. Councilwoman Darby.
Aye.
Councilman Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Here, or aye, excuse me.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Claffey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dahl.
Here.
Do you wish to vote aye on the motion to appoint the interim clerk?
Sure.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Mead.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Cormier. We appreciate your help tonight. All right, with that, I am going to read some introductory remarks. As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. Ms. Cormier, I ask that you call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oaks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Dahl.
Now I'm here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
All members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, participating on the Zoom platform are Councilwomen Mead and Dahl. Additionally, School Board members Bob Boyle and Christine Paulson, and finally Deputy Fire Chief Perry Weller. All other city staff and city officials are present in chambers.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of City Council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during Council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on Council's website at www.c.i.stanton.v.a.us backslash government backslash city dash cancel. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of City Council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020 dash zero four regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020 dash zero four, as extended by City Council Ordinance number 2021 dash zero six. All right. With that said, I would like to just remind everybody while in the chambers and throughout City Hall, if you could wear your mask, we have hand sanitizer at the entrance of the chambers. We also provide hand sanitizing wipes at the podium, and if you can be mindful of social distancing. Also, with the City Council members, I would ask that if you would like to be recognized, please recognize the mayor, and I will recognize you in order for you to be able to make comments and ask questions. All right, with that said, I will entertain a motion for the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move. I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular session meeting agenda with the following changes. The work session shall remain as printed, but I'm making the addition in the regular meeting of Item Four in the work session, discussion of authorization of Stanton Fire Marshal and Designee to exercise police powers, to a consideration of the request for the Fire Marshal with police powers be moved or in place in Item H in the regular session.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Cormier, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is a joint work session for FY 2022 School Board Budget. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of Council. Ms. Beauregard and I have seated our seats for this portion of your work session to Dr. Garrett Smith, the School Division Superintendent, and School Board Chair Ken Venable. They are also joined by all the other members of the School Board, including Bob Boyle, Amy Ratchford, Natasha McCurdy, Ron Ramsey, and Christine Paulson, some on Zoom, as I mentioned previously, and the others here in Council chambers. And as in keeping with prior practice, the schools have a presentation to share with Council, and at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Dr. Smith, would you like Chairman Venable, Chairman Venable, would you care to call your meeting to order?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Oaks and members of City Council. At this point, I'd like to call Stanton City School Board to order, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent.
Welcome, School Board members. Thank you, Chairman Venable, and welcome, Dr. Smith.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Venable. Well, good evening, Mayor Oaks and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to work together on our respective budgets. This has certainly been a challenging year for all of us. In Stanton City Schools, we've worked hard to create a budget that reflects our commitment to addressing unprecedented student needs coming out of a pandemic. Our staff had to make a rapid and dramatic shift in how they do everything, from virtual instruction to meal deliveries. They worked incredibly hard during the initial shutdown and throughout this school year. In fact, our nutrition operations and transportation teams never stopped working on the front lines throughout the pandemic. Over the summer, our teachers put in over 10,000 hours of training to prepare for an all-virtual start to the school year, and they did that because we asked them to do that. You know, they weren't required. It wasn't in their contract. We distribute, we distributed 470,000 meals and $10,000 worth of free local produce. Despite our teachers' Herculean efforts, we know that not all students learn well in a virtual setting. Most children need to be in the classroom face-to-face with their teacher, and I've been a big advocate for return to the classroom. Our most vulnerable learners have suffered over the last year, and we know the pandemic's effects will last far beyond this time. The decisions we make now about how we help our students make a comeback will impact them for years to come. As you know, the schools are requesting level funding from the city this year to our fiscal year 20 allocation. We currently have a $443,750 gap in what we've asked for and what the city is offering. In the school business, we might refer to this as a problem of practice. When we encounter these types of situations in Stanton City Schools, one of our operating principles is that any problem can be solved through effective communication and collaboration. It takes will and skill. Learning does not take place without productive struggle. Like my dad used to say, if it wasn't hard to do, it probably wasn't worth doing it. We remain committed to that philosophy. We are not at the end of this budget process, and we're optimistic about reaching a win-win solution. So even though we're facing problems that you will hear about tonight in our presentation, please be assured that they will be resolved. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Brad Wagner, and I'll join him for questions and answers following his presentation. Thanks again.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Oaks, Council members, and School Board members. I'm going to try to move quickly through this slide deck so that we have time at the end to have an in-depth discussion. The school's budget for fiscal year 22 is built on two concepts: headwinds and momentum. I guess I should have made it tailwinds, but there you go. The headwinds we face are the effects of the pandemic on our students. These include learning loss, the toll taken on the mental health and emotional well-being of our youngsters, and the impact on our most vulnerable learners. As you can see, our staff has developed a number of strategies to address each of these challenges. Our budget is also designed to efficiently maintain the momentum of a number of strategic initiatives. These include creating and developing and maintaining competitive and living wages for all of our employees, a read-by-second-grade initiative, expanding the preschool program, restoring our elementary fine arts program, establishing career pathways at the middle school level, consolidation of our maintenance and transportation operations, as well as installing a debit credit card payment system for school fees and spirit score, spirit store purchases. As we move through this budget, you will notice that most of the slides and most of the money are related to people. This is because we confront the headwinds with people, capture momentum or tailwinds with people. We've been operating with a staffing deficit for more than a dozen years. More than 50 full-time equivalents were eliminated in the fallout from the Great Recession, and we are still trying to recover from that. Over the last several years, SCS has opted to add positions at the school level where it's a more direct benefit and impact on students rather than at the administrative level. Our new budget includes 19 new positions. One-third of these address mental health and vulnerable learners. One-third target our strategic initiatives, and the third address normal changes in student demographics and the needs of the new larger high school. I want to point out at this point that because of prudent fiscal management, we are able to add 19 new critical positions, assuming the same budget contribution from the city that we got two years ago. Believe you've seen this information in previous presentations. We have a 5% raise built in our budget for the staff. The 5% raise is driven by the state budget, which provides matching funds for 5% for all our SOQ positions. We also have an additional 2% increase for our operations staff, which, as Dr. Smith pointed out, were on the front lines throughout this entire school year. We also have an increase of the minimum wage for school employees to $11 per hour. Another tailwind or headwind we're facing this year is an increase in our health insurance costs. As with the city, the schools face this headwind. However, the cost of the schools is estimated at $285,000 per year. That's about $60,000 more per year than this city. This slide summarizes the increase in non-compensation expenses. About a half of the total requested increases restore funding levels cut last year. The other half of the requests are increases. In particular, these include utility cost increases due to the new larger high school. We are able to offset about a half of these total requests by tapping CARES Act money. As you may be able to see from this slide, it's kind of small in some parts, the vast majority of our new expenditures, as I stated earlier, are people costs. We're drilled down into our education fund. You can see every expenditure category was cut in fiscal year 21, this current year, and each one of those grow in FY 22. If you look at the technology line, which is the second from the bottom, those actually grew in both years. But this is an area where we took full advantage of CARES Act funding, and those dollars aren't represented in this particular dataset. The School Board adopted a total budget for the schools of $40.5 billion on March 1st, an increase of 5.8% over fiscal year 20. The Education Fund increases 4.8% over fiscal year 20. The SOP Fund is financed by the state, and the Cafeteria Fund is mostly funded through food service revenues and grants. So while those have the greatest percentage increase and represent 30% of our funds of the budget, they don't really impact our local funding. This slide here is, shows who contributes how much to the school's budget in FY 22 on the far right and over the last four years. I find it useful to understand how funding changes over time and maybe one that those of you with an actual slide deck in your hand may want to refer to as I proceed. I characterize fiscal year 21 as a year of crisis funding. The pandemic forced significant reduction in the city's revenue projections, and as a result, appropriations for the schools was cut $1.8 million from $13.85 million in fiscal year 20 to $12.04 million in FY 21. We had to tap emergency revenue sources to fill the budget gap. That included $750,000 from our fund balance reserves and another $674,000 of CARES Act funding that was used to pay salaries for 13 teachers, as well as to retain a number of instructional assistants to provide daycare for teachers' children so that teachers could teach. Question will come up, I'm sure, and I'm trying to head it off. What about CARES Act? Why don't we use that to fill our budget gap and to meet all our budget needs? Well, federal aid is restricted and designed primarily for learning loss and mental health supports, repairs and improvements to improve air quality and reduce the risk of viral transmission, and implement systems to deal with future pandemics. CARES Act money is not, it is ideal for capital assets and consumables like masks and air purifying solution and wipes. It's a risky gambit to use for salaries. When the funding disappears, the people disappear. This is a lesson learned by my predecessors following the Great Recession when the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 spurred an acquisition of teachers and instructional aids throughout the state of Virginia. When that money disappeared, so do those positions. This slide gives you an example of how we do utilize CARES Act money. We save money when federal grant dollars pays expenditures that would have otherwise been paid for with local dollars. Some of these examples are ones that we've already employed, and some of them are in our plan for the next round of CARES funding. That included purchasing buses and vehicles, which reduced the local transfer into our CIP fund. We hired long-term third-party contract substitutes, which allowed us to replace 60% of our substitute budget, and we also gained full-time in-school support. So our substitutes, if not substituting for absent teacher, is providing instructional assistance to an existing teacher, another teacher. We are paying a part-time school psychologist, are moving a part-time school psychologist to CARES funding that frees up local dollars so we can hire a badly needed full-time school psychologist. We're re-engineering a elementary school basement, which is saving us $30,000 a year in insurance premiums. That's a benefit that keeps on giving. And again, a lot of this money was used on technology purchases. We upgraded fully-depreciated network infrastructure. We purchased masses amount, massive amounts of data capacity and bandwidth. This slide is pretty straightforward. Stanton City Schools is seeking $13,850 million in funding from the city of Stanton. This is the same amount of funding that was provided in fiscal year 20, two years ago. It's $1,800,000 more than last year, the crisis year, and it's $443,000, $444,000 more than the city has offered. Whereas FY 21 budget was characterized as crisis funding, FY 22 is the year of sustainable funding, and the budget is characterized by the following points. CARES Act money is one-time money. It's not suitable, it's not suitable for sustainable programs. It's not suitable for payroll. Local funding is required this year to replace emergency sources used last year. Addressing the impact of the pandemic and maintaining strategic initiatives are multi-year efforts. We estimate three years. Sustaining them requires assured local funding. A sustainable property tax delivers assured local funding. This slide covers our revenue sources, which comes from three principal entities: local, state, and federal. As we compare year-over-year funding, we want to focus on the difference between our proposed 22 budget and the FY 22, excuse me, and the FY 20 budget from two years ago. We do this because FY 21 was such an outlier and does not provide a good basis to measure increases and decreases. You'll note in our FY 22 budget, we are not planning to appropriate any funds from our fund balance. You'll also note that the state is the only revenue source providing more funding in FY 22 than it did in FY 20. The only one. Federal funding is mostly level. The uptick you see in FY 21 is that, that $674,000 of CARES Act funding has been in, put into our budget as a line item. Budget facts. The city's budget proposal cuts the school's appropriation $443,000. The two-cent tax rate cut proposed by the city is almost exactly the same as the school's budget deficit. Also, compared to FY 20, general fund revenues for the city are increasing. The schools are seeking local level funding. The city is offering a 3.2% cut. For 20 years, 20 years, the city and the schools have had an agreement to split certain tax revenue 50/50. This agreement eliminates the natural tension between the local funding source and the school division during the budgeting process because it provides a simple mathematic formula for determining how much money the schools should be provided. This year, city decision-makers chose not to honor this agreement and did so without consulting the schools. Based on the formula, Stanton City Schools should receive almost $14.3 million in appropriation from the city. We are only asking for $13,850,000. The city's proposed budget underfunds the schools by $890,000, according to the tax-sharing formula. It should be noted that the schools absorbed 50% of the tax revenue deficit last year during the budget crisis. The point of the 50/50 tax share agreement is to avoid exactly the kind of dilemma we'll be discussing in a few minutes. Bridging the gap. On this slide, we lay out possible solutions for resolving the budget gap. They include maintaining the current sustainable 95-cent tax rate, upholding the 20-year tax share agreement between the cities and schools, reconsidering the city's revenue projections and expenditures budget, and potentially tapping our reserves for a second year, a second year in a row. I would not take more than 25% of those funds. Due to the low level of funding from last year, we do not anticipate any carryover from this year's budget into next year's. As a result, reserves used to supplement appropriations in FY 22 will likely not be replenished. To summarize our budget position and the steps forward, the school seeks $13.85 million appropriation from the city to adequately fund schools, address the impact of the pandemic, and continue its important strategic initiatives. The schools advocate for maintaining sustainable property tax rate of 95 cents in order to provide reliable funding for schools into the future. The schools, in conjunction with the city, will document the longstanding tax-sharing agreement to prevent the exact issue that arose during this year's budget development process. We are not at the end of the budget process, as Dr. Smith stated, and we are willing to work collaboratively to achieve a win-win solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Smith, did you want to make some comments?
We are available to answer questions.
We are available to answer questions and we wanted to make sure we left adequate time for that. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them or have Brad answer them.
I'm going to ask that Mr. Treyer come up towards the podium as we might have questions for you as well. Any members of City Council have questions?
This is Carol Lindahl.
Councilmember Dole.
First, I would like to say that for a lot of years, the City Council and the School Board have had a collegial relationship, working together. To me, this presentation seemed a bit adversarial. Maybe I misread it, but when we're accused of not honoring an agreement, you know, it sounds a little adversarial. So that's disappointing for me because we've always worked together to come up with what's best for the city. So just a clarification, that agreement was we were going to split 50-50 new revenues. And I can tell you personally, having been on council since 2006, that there's been multiple times that we've not done that because of particular needs, recession, you know, other issues. So I just wanted to clarify then.
Right. Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I was just wondering if all members of the School Board are unanimous in their support of maintaining the 95-cent tax rate in order to fully fund the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
I could respond. Carol Lindahl again. I just wanted to clarify that the 95-cent tax rate will be a 7-cent increase in our real estate tax to the citizen.
Did you want to make a comment?
I was just going to respond to Councilmember Dole's first point about the 50-50 revenue share. Mr. Rosenberg did share with me some documentation earlier this morning that did show during 2009, at the outbreak of the Great Recession, that the 50-50 share, and I have it right here, the 50-50 revenue agreement was that there was a voluntary suspension of the traditional city-school formula for sharing the new revenue 50-50. So what that demonstrates to me is a collaborative approach to problem-solving by both the city and the schools. Clearly, they had conversations and agreed that we're in a recession and so this year we're not going to honor that. So I can see how the two entities worked together to arrive at that conclusion in 2009. And then in 2014, in this document, the city's funding formula for education suspended during the recession has been restored in this budget. So this demonstrates that the 50-50 revenue share was reinstated in 2014. So there were five years during the recession where it wasn't honored. That information was provided to me by Mr. Rosenberg and I just wanted to provide that as clarification.
Okay.
Adam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
This may go to Brad and I may ask Phil to as well. I understand you have a $900,000 your fund balance currently that is not going to be tapped whatsoever. I understand the $2.8 million CARES Fund monies that you received back a year or so ago, that some of that has been used to fund the 19 positions that you got. But also, none of that has, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but none of that is addressing the $5.8 million that y'all are about to receive through the American Recovery Act that has much less strings on it and also expands the timeline that you can spend that over several years.
Right. We can spend that into 2024. But back to the first point that you made, Councilman Robertson, about dipping into our balance reserves. If you go back to page 12 and we look at option number, you know, option number four is us going into our reserves and option number five is some combination of one through four. It's like some smart and thoughtful combination of one through four, so we don't cut too deeply in any one area. So we are willing to consider that possibility.
Right. Councilmember Clappy.
I wanted to point out a couple of things. The first being, we must understand our city debt currently is about $77 million, of which $50 million of it is attributable to the school division. And of course, $43 million of that is due to the new high school we have. And I think that's an extenuating circumstance that needs to be pointed out, that we're paying a disproportionate amount of the debt service to the education. I don't mind doing that and I thank you for everything you do, but I do want to point out the fact that there's some citizens in Stanton that are quite concerned that we're not open and we're paying a lot of money for a school sitting out there with no students in it. And I can't help but point out that Augusta County is returning to classrooms four days a week, live teaching, starting April 15th, and Stanton is not. And you guys are telling me that we should go back to the 95-cent tax rate that we have dropped 2 cents. And that, in effect, would put a 10.7% increase on the homeowners in Stanton because the appraisal went up over 10%. And if you leave the tax rate at the 95 cents that you think is your cure-all, you're putting a 10% more additional burden on your homeowners. It's fine and dandy, guys, but we need to have some schools open. And I don't think the taxpayers are going to be quite happy with me if I take their tax rate and put a full 10% tax so that the school gets it. And I can't find this policy in print anywhere where the revenue sharing has been done. And if you have it in print, please bring it to me because I need to read it. I've never, I didn't know that that was expected from you all and I certainly have never read it and I would, I need to see it.
Okay. Well, I'm happy, Councilman Clappy, to respond to what I think there were three main points there. First of all, the $46 million bond that we used to fund the high school was separate from any of our budgets. That was separate. And, you know, we had great need for a new high school. The high school was in terrible physical shape. And I'll also point out that we stayed true, we were very thankful that City Council approved our not-to exceed $46 million bond and we stayed true to it on the project and kept those costs in the timeline where they needed to be. And I will say this, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I dare say that another high school will be built in the state of Virginia for less than $100 million. So we saved a whole bunch of money on that high school for the city. Regarding students in school, we have had students in school this entire semester. We've been in a hybrid model due to six-foot distancing. Right before spring break, CDC changed their guidance to three-foot distancing in classrooms. And so we did bring that to the board on Monday night, our first day back from the break, and we laid out the kind of an analysis for the board to decide on, to, you know, kind of a risk-benefit analysis. And so we calculated how much instructional time we would gain. And then we calculated, really, I think the main point was how many students would have to switch teachers. And there were 368 students who would have to switch teachers with just a few weeks to go in the school year in order for us to bring four children in four days a week. And that is because our instructional model is much different than Augusta County's who you referenced. In their virtual model, the students don't see teachers at all. It's completely asynchronous. Teachers log assignments into a computer and the students work on them at home or wherever they are. Our teachers are teaching in both models and we're teaching them in both models because we didn't want to shortchange parents who chose the virtual model or parents who chose the hybrid model. Everybody wanted live teachers and real synchronous-in-time instruction. And so our model is much different than theirs. As we said Monday night, we're more than willing to bring the students back, but the School Board had to consider what's best for kids and in their estimation, the instructional time we would gain is not sufficient enough to offset the emotional trauma for families of students having to change teachers again with just a few weeks to go in the school year. So it's all framed from what's best for kids. And that was the decision that they made and I think they made a wise decision. And as far as getting this agreement in print, it's a handshake agreement and that's what it is and it's not in print, but as we stated in our last point here, we are requesting strongly that that agreement is in writing moving forward. Other school divisions, we have samples from other school divisions of this agreement and we want it in writing so we avoid this exact situation that we're in right now because that's the purpose of the agreement in the first place, is to avoid these kinds of conversations. And I agree with Councilmember Dole. The most important thing is preserving the relationship between the two entities. So we would have preferred to have resolved all of this prior to coming to this meeting tonight.
And I'd like to point out, there's about 20 years of Excel spreadsheets that clearly dictate what the formula is and also point out that Roanoke County has this 50-50 split documented. They based their model on Stanton's agreement.
Adam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Just one other comment. Garrett, Mr. Smith, I understand, Mr. Venable and everything, and Brad, when we did that trip, you have to understand too that I know this councilman, and I've talked to several others, we are going to do the best we can to help you with that piece of land, at least this one is, because I think it's the right thing to do to solve a 50-year travesty. We're trying to help you to the best of our ability, but you also have to realize that for us right now during this time, during the suffering that our citizens are going through with lost jobs, a lot of money that they're struggling to come up with, we have to also look at their pocketbook. And asking them to pay a 10% increase in their taxes, not only does that affect grandma and granddad, not only does that affect the regular citizens of the state, it also affects the mothers and fathers that are out here struggling, you know, to keep a roof over those children. You know, and we've got to balance those concerns too. We've got to find out, you know, the possibility to build a new fire station, to build a new police station, to take care of a 100-year water pipe that could go at any minute, to look into the possibility of flood mitigation that, you know, we had one, Ellicott City said that it could cost up to $100 million. There ain't no way we can do that. We've got a lot of roads and things that we need to take care of. Please, I mean, we're going to do everything we can to take care of our students, everything we can, but we've also got to keep the lights on in this city and to keep everything else going. Please, you know, please don't say that we're trying to, you know, not take care of you. We are going to try to work together, but we've got a job to do to keep this city open as well. So like I said, we'll do what we can and we'll work with you, but we also can't put on that kind of taxation under our citizens right now.
So first of all, Councilman Robertson, thank you for your words of support. And the citizens that you're speaking of, our students are included among those citizens. They've struggled very much. I would say that those families of those students want the schools and the city working together to be doing everything we possibly can to overcome the learning loss and like we said, the mental health, the child abuse that has occurred over time during the pandemic. So I think a lot of the arguments you just made support a lot of the arguments we just made. I think they're just different words.
Councilmember Clappy, did you have a follow-up? Okay. Councilmember Holmes.
Garrett, one of the reasons why you chose early on to, because you had so many people requesting to do at-home teaching and you didn't have enough teachers, so you had to decide whether you were going to go half and half or, and so wasn't that the reason why we haven't been able to get back into the classroom as it is?
So I will say this, you know, looking back and having a year to look back on it, I don't intend to ever recommend a virtual start to any school year unless there's some circumstances that we can't predict that are beyond our control. We know a lot more now than we did at that time. And everything that we're going to use our CARES Act money and our ARPA money, is that what it's called, will be to ensure that when we get up against it again, we're not going to have to close schools because we got HEPA filters on our bus that clean all the air. We have bipolar ionization systems in our schools that trap bacteria and viruses. You know, we have all kinds of major upgrades. And then, you know, referring back to the new money that's coming in, it does say in there that we can use it for school construction to account for physical distancing and spacing. And so we are already talking about renovations at Shelburne. One of our problems at Shelburne is we have relatively small classrooms and relatively large class sizes. So even on Monday, when the board was considering returning to three feet, we were only going to be able to do that at Shelburne if enough families remained virtual. So thinking about next year, we can use this money, in my interpretation of what they sent us, to add extra classrooms at Shelburne. We can use the money to do that now and we won't have to use any of the city's money to do those renovations and improvements at Shelburne. So, yes, yeah, looking back, you know, we recommended virtual based on the science at the time. We know a lot more now. I hope to never recommend anything that keeps children out of school again in my career.
And we all didn't know any better. I mean, we were following what the CDC was saying. So I mean, I'm not trying to put the blame on you. I think, I just know that that was a decision we made early on and we all agreed with that. And that, you know, so I mean, I know that's why we don't have kids and we don't have full classrooms going now.
Right. We have them going every other day.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
This is Carol Lindahl.
Councilmember Dole.
You know, in the spirit of trying to work something out, you know, if council would make the decision to vote no on the expansion of the Mill River Regional Jail, that would free up some money that could be available for the schools without raising taxes further. And there may be some other things like that that we could not do and provide funding. So I would like to see us, you know, work together and make some of those big decisions that would allow funding for the schools.
All right. Any additional questions?
Ms. Brennade.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd just like to also add that if you're thinking long-term and strategically about the quality of our schools, it's an essential item of consideration for families who are considering relocating to Stanton. And it's also essential to the attraction of new high-paying jobs, to corporations who want to bring their folks here, to the folks who are going to be telecommuting in the future, their professional families, they pay well, they want their children to be educated well, they want their children to have great school facilities. So we have to consider this as an investment in Stanton's long-term economic development and not to go with the lowest common denominator when we compare our school system to other school systems in the area.
All right. One last time, any additional comments or questions?
I would like to state that back in 2019, when we veered away from the revenue sharing, that was because the economy just bottomed out.
2009.
What did I say? I'm sorry, I meant 2009, forgive me. Well, this year, we're dealing with a pandemic and the city's also had to deal with two floods. So please do keep that in consideration. Um. And when it comes to being able to fund positions with any sort of CARES Act money or the American Recovery Act money, um, the 5.8 million that you all, I believe, have already received, just recently received or will be receiving?
Uh, I, I believe it's a, probably a month or two away.
Oh, okay. All right. We have in our budget where we're now having to fund some firemen because they were funded through a grant and that grant has now run out and we're having to fund that through our budget. So we've had to take that into consideration from day one uh, when we approved the grant. Now, when it comes to the um, the fund balance, Mr. Traer, I would like for you just to give a quick overview as far as the city's fund balance and what we have spent with our fund balance.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, you know, would like to say that I think the, the schools have done a magnificent job getting through this past year and they've worked very hard to try to prepare a budget that addresses the needs of the children. As far as fund balance in the FY 2022 budget, we've exhausted it. We, we've absolutely tapped it out. There's no place to go. We did have some conversations and I can, can, can say that, that when I spoke to Dr. Smith about where we were at and if we went any further that we'd have to, uh, it would affect positions. And, and in a, in a half a second, he was like, I don't want to see that happen, to his credit. The uh, five cent tax increase also coincides with the additional expenditures for the jails and juvenile detention. We're effectively covering those increased costs. The, the jail, we, we've heard about it for months. And uh, the jail is, 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 is absolutely affecting police, fire, uh, public works, uh, schools. It's affecting everybody. And, and in trying to adjust a tax rate under a 50 50 agreement, you'd have to double what we have now to 10% just for the schools to cover the, the additional 1.2 million. The 50 50 agreement makes a lot of sense, but just like during the recession of 2009, it, it needs to be flexible enough to take account for mandated costs that we have no control over with these outside agencies. And, and the city, and the citizens are just not in a position to bear the cost solely. So I, I, I just, you know, from a fund balance, we're exhausted. I know that uh, the schools did use fund balance last year. We use furlough days. We um, um, the, the, the schools have an additional 2.7, 2.8 million, which just came in. I, I think they just applied for the money in the last couple of weeks. So that's not appropriated yet. It's not spent, uh, plus the 5.8. So they have a, an additional of 8.5 million dollars coming in. So. Um, and I would like to mention that uh, when, when the CARES Act was first given to the schools a year ago, one of the first moves we did is we moved 1.6 million dollars directly to the schools in order to help with the infrastructure that they needed to try to bring the children back online at least. So.
Thank you. Dr. Smith.
Can I make one more?
Certainly.
So we know that the, the number for the 50 50 split is about $888,000. We're not demanding that. We're not requesting that. We know that that's what the number is. Again, we come here with a solution oriented mindset. If some portion of that money could be used to help us, like we said, some combination of one through four. And as always, we're willing to sit down and work, work through this. Like I said in my opening comments, you know, I, this is hard work. It's, it's complicated work and it's hard to do, but it can be solved. And it just takes everybody sitting down at the table and working together to, to come to a solution. It always, it always works when we, when we approach it that way.
Certainly. And that's what we want to do. We want to be able to um, come up with that win-win for everyone involved for the city as a whole, which of course includes our school system. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You've given us a lot to consider and I'm sure all of you will be available if we have any questions.
Certainly happy to do it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right. And yeah, thank you for all the school board members that attended. Chairman Venable, did you need to call your meeting adjourned?
Yes, Madam Mayor. At this time, I called the Stanton City School Board adjourned.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you.
What is it?
All right. So the next item on the agenda is item number three on the work session agenda and item D on the regular meeting agenda. It's a discussion of a franchise ordinance for easement for electrical equipment and facilities across 500 North Augusta Street. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff Johnston, the city's director of public works, will present this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Welcome.
It is great to be here. While the title of this is an easement at 500 North Augusta, uh, this really deals with Central Avenue. Uh, 500 North Augusta is the fire station. And uh, the issue at hand is related to the Central Avenue streetscape project. Now, one of the many great features of that project is it will take the overhead utilities and move them underground to improve that streetscape, starting at Frederick running all the way to Pump Street. But there at Pump Street, that last pole that comes down impacts the other poles in the area. So right now, if you were to stand at this police station, notice the power lines go sort of westbound down Pump and then turn the corner and head north on Central. Well, that pole at the corner is going away. It's part of the streetscape plan. So now the pot wires need to sort of cut the corner across the parking lot in order to maintain service. So these, the franchise agreement is to allow uh, those power lines to cross over city property uh, once the pole at the corner is removed as part of the streetscape project.
All right. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Why did the streetscape project stop at Domino's and not go the last block to Church Hill Avenue?
Well, the project itself has been around for a very, very long time. Uh, and I certainly am not aware of everything that went into the thought process of it. But I do know that starting at Pump Street going north, there already are brick sidewalks as part of a previous project. So it was seen, now that, that previous project, it did not move the utilities underground, but it did lay the sidewalks in. So it, I believe that was the, the thought process.
Yeah. I just want to, thank you.
At, at some point, it, it's got to stop being underground. You're going to have this issue of that last pole needing, needed to be accommodated somewhere.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you. As mentioned, this is item D on the regular meeting agenda. At this point, we are now on break and we will return at 6:20. Okay, we're back from break. Which takes us on to item number four, a discussion of authorization of Stanton Fire Marshal and Designee to exercise police powers. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This item is on your agenda this evening at the request of Vice Mayor Robertson. It involves the authorization of the city's fire marshal and the fire marshal's designee to exercise the same police powers as law enforcement officers, including use of a firearm to facilitate the investigation and prosecution of certain criminal offenses. The Vice Mayor first contacted me concerning this issue in January. You may recall, in response to his inquiry, I sent an email describing our current practices in the city involving cooperation between the fire rescue and police departments. That email is included in your agenda materials. Subsequently, Mr. Robertson requested that the item be included on this work session agenda for discussion. Before you have your discussion, let me share one observation with you. I don't believe there is a right or wrong answer here. The state code provision which you have in your agenda materials permits a locality to so authorize its fire marshal, but it does not require it. Each locality has the discretion whether to implement the authority. There are 95 counties and 38 independent cities in Virginia. Of the 38 cities, 24 have implemented the authority and 14 have not, each making the decision for their respective community. Similarly, there is no uniformity among those counties which have fire marshals. I recognize that this item has now been added to the regular meeting agenda for consideration. With due respect to Vice Mayor Robertson and his desire to move forward this evening, if there is a consensus among council members to proceed, my recommendation is that with the benefit of your discussion, we be afforded an opportunity to finalize the proposed resolution and related materials and present the matter for council's final consideration on April 22nd. I do want to note that we have Police Chief Jim Williams and Fire Rescue Chief Scott Garber here with us as well as Deputy Fire Chief Perry Weller, all of whom are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a presentation.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I want to thank the council for allowing me to present this proposal tonight. I want to start by saying, first of all, this is in no way a slight or stepping on anyone's toes or trying to carve out new Terry, new territory for one of our existing departments. This is what is best for our city and what is legally best for her citizens. Currently, there are approximately 70% of independent cities in the state that have law enforcement fire marshals. Harrisonburg, Waynesboro, Winchester, Fairfax, Falls Church, Hopewell, Alexandria, Charlottesville, Richmond, Lynchburg, Norfolk, and I can go on. I was honored to speak with our state fire marshal, Mr. Garrett Dyer, who was appointed by Governor, Governor Northram. I spoke with him a few months ago and we talked about Stanton's current setup. Mr. Dyer informed me about the Code of Virginia Title 27 that allows localities to appoint law enforcement fire marshals. After doing so, those fire marshals must maintain training and complete 40 hours of education every two years. This is where he brought up two very important US Supreme Court cases that have direct bearing on our situation. Michigan versus Tyler and Michigan versus Clifford, which deal with the integrity of the scene such as fire, explosion, et cetera, and the chain of custody. Currently, our fire investigators can search a fire scene for wrongdoing, but then must turn over any evidence to a PD investigator, thereby tainting said evidence in exchange from one entity to another, such as was brought up on Michigan, Clifford, Michigan versus Clifford, Michigan v. Tyler. And if the proper fire investigation warrants aren't obtained, then you bring the US Constitution's Fourth Amendment into play. Basically, a man's home is his castle. Any evidence obtained illegally will invoke what is known in the Supreme Court as the exclusionary rule, also called the fruits of the poisonous tree, which is any evidence obtained from an illegal or unlawful search cannot be presented at trial. Per the state fire marshal, there is absolutely no reason a fire marshal can't perform law enforcement duties during an investigation. At this point, I would like to turn over uh, for further expounding on Michigan versus Clifford, Michigan versus Tyler, and the Fourth Amendment to our city attorney, if he would expound on that and give us, because coming from him, I, I, I do it layman terms. He's going to give you the legal basis.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks, members of city council. Uh, Vice Mayor Robertson had asked me to offer my own analysis of these two Supreme Court cases and I will not try to delve too deeply into legalese, but I do want to explain their import to this discussion. And that import is why should a fire marshal have law enforcement powers? And, and like City Manager Rosenberg, I'm not here to say what's right or what's wrong, but this is where the law really leads to the importance that the fire marshal understand and perhaps at council's discretion have these law enforcement powers. I won't discuss the facts of Michigan v. Tyler because that occurred in 1978, but Michigan v. Clifford built upon Michigan v. Tyler in 1984. And the principle that the Vice Mayor detailed or described called the exclusionary rule uh, came into play in Michigan v. Clifford. And in that case, there was a house fire. And the house fire began at sometime around 5:40 AM for the court's recital of the facts. And this occurred in Michigan and then about 7:00 AM, the fire was concluded, the fire was put, put out or extinguished and both fire and police left the scene. At that point, they suspected this may be an arson. When the fire marshal uh, arrived at the scene, it was about 1 o'clock. The owners of the house who were out of town had already had the neighbor come in and board up the house. The fire marshal proceeded to enter the house without a warrant or without consent of the owner. The fire marshal found a crock pot that was set to a timer in the basement of the house as well as some gas cans. The fire marshal, again, bait, already suspected arson at that point, but proceeded to walk through the house and noticed things such as there were nails in the walls for pictures, but there were no pictures on the walls. There were VCR tapes, I'm going back to 1984, but no VCR. And so there was a prosecution brought against the homeowner for arson. Well, the exclusionary rule says that if you do not have a criminal warrant based on probable cause and you are a government official, what, no matter if you're a police officer or with the fire department and you collect evidence or you enter a home without that criminal warrant, that evidence can be excluded at the criminal trial. And so the court, in fact, excluded the evidence that the fire marshal found during that search, the US Supreme Court. And this is why, when we talk about a fire marshal having law enforcement powers, I think a, any component of the powers as determined by the state statute is extensive training in these law enforcement powers. And you'll see in the proposed resolution that the Code of Virginia prescribes the training and, and Vice Mayor Robertson also described the continuing education requirements. And I think it's important, and I, I, I don't know that anybody in law enforcement or in the fire service would disagree that if there is an arson, which is a crime, we want to see a conviction. And having a fire marshal without proper knowledge as well as pow, as well as law enforcement powers, who simply doesn't know the law and just like in Michigan. who simply doesn't know the law and, just like in Michigan v. Clifford, goes and conducts an illegal search, can jeopardize any prosecution. And so that's really what Michigan v. Clifford stands for. It's the idea that a fire marshal, just like a police officer, without a warrant can collect evidence that will ultimately be excluded from a criminal prosecution. And so I think when we talk about this from a legal perspective, it is a great idea, at least from an education perspective, that the fire marshal understands what he or she does has a direct bearing on a criminal prosecution for an offense such as arson. So at the vice mayor's invitation, he wanted me to explain that case, as well as what it stood for from a criminal law perspective. And I will turn it back over to you.
All right.
Thank you.
I will say that I did reach out today to talk to Waynesboro Chief of Police Mike Wilhelm and ask Mike, and he called me back, and I said, "Waynesboro is fairly new to the fire marshal scene of having a law enforcement fire marshal." And I said, "Mike, would you please explain to me what is your take on this?" And his first statement was, "Mark, I love them. They are absolutely the best thing we've done for a long time." He said, "We work well together." It basically, and he said, "It basically allows us as policemen to do our job, to do what we were trained to do, to investigate murder, to take care of the everyday police work, to take care of criminal acts, and it allows the fire department, for which they have trained all their life, to do what they do best. They know what they're doing." And I remember an analogy, and if I'm saying out of bounds, you know, I'm a pharmacist, and I will tell you, I'm pretty dag on good at it. I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but I'm pretty good at it. Dr. Blake McKibben, a local surgeon, is amazing, is an amazing young surgeon. You don't want Blake McKibben going into the pharmacy and trying to dispense drugs. It's a waste of his time. He doesn't have a study the knowledge of the chemical interactions that, you know, go from one to the other. And you sure don't want me going into the OR and operating on you. And that's the way I look at it. What is best for one, let them do their job. What is best for the other, let them do that job. It's a much cleaner type thing. Currently, once a city fire marshal determines that there's a fire that is possibly intentional, they must stop the investigation and wait for the city police officer to come to the scene, secure the scene, and wait while a criminal search warrant is obtained from the magistrate. Without law enforcement powers, the fire marshal who obtains the search warrant is unable to serve said warrant on the property and must be served by a city police officer or city sheriff deputy. That officer is now committed to the scene for the duration of the fire marshal's investigation, thus tying up that valuable police resource that could be available for other emergencies. So I'm simply putting forward, what is best for the city of Stanton right now is for us to have a law enforcement fire marshal that can do the job that they've worked at and trained at for their entire life in some cases and let the city police do what they do best. That's it.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments by council members?
This is Carol Lindahl.
Councilmember Doll.
I have a number of questions. In your presentation, you said this was best for the city. Whose opinion is that?
Well, that's mine right now.
Okay, your opinion. All right, so were you implying or stating that we have had evidence of tainting evidence in the past from the first law that you referenced?
Ms. Doll, I never said such. I simply stated US Supreme Court cases, Michigan v. Clifford, Michigan v. Tyler, which stated that. I'm simply stating that if we don't do such, there is always the possibility that that could occur. Why let it occur?
That could occur with a fire marshal that had powers. Who, are you saying we've ever had evidence illegally obtained or unlawful evidence in the history of how it's operated here?
I'm not, ma'am.
Okay. Has the fire marshal ever entered without a warrant?
I don't know that. I can give you some, I can give you, if you want to go down that road, Ms. Doll, I can quote you some certain circumstances.
Okay, well, that's up to you to go down the road, but...
Well, if you bring it up, I'm just trying to say, you know, I'm...
I have to ask because I don't know why we're getting into micromanaging the departments. You know, just like no one wants you in the OR, why are you bringing this up when our police chief and our fire chief have examined us multiple times and are satisfied with the way it's working? And because we don't have any evidence that we've had any problems with it working? So that's why I have questions. And then my final question is, what will this cost? When you're saying we're going to do everything we can for the schools, well, what is this going to cost?
At this point, right now, we are trying to get the fire marshal, you know, basically instituted in the city of Stanton. I can ask the chief of, the fire chief, if you'd like that answer. He's coming to the podium.
Welcome.
Thank you. The current cost right now to start that program up is less than three thousand dollars.
Is that all right, Ms. Doll?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead. I would like a follow-up question with the chief. So the startup costs are three thousand dollars, and that's the cost of training the fire marshal, keeping him up with ongoing training? Is that the cost also providing with a firearm? And does this contemplate adding a deputy? Because I keep seeing the fire marshal and his designee or her designee, one would hope. And so I don't understand how the cost could be only three thousand dollars.
So we're only certified in one person in this position. As the code, I am the fire marshal for the city of Stanton. My designee is Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal Perry Weller, who would be qualified in this position. Right now, we have ten qualified fire investigators that are qualified, but we would not be doing ten personnel. At the most, we would be doing two. Overall, occurring cost would be very minimal because they're already doing the training. They have to do twenty hours a year. I can tell you, Chief Weller, as well as myself, have been fire investigators for over twenty-one years now. So that's over four hundred hours of training on top of what we did to initiate the class, which was four weeks long.
And another follow-up question, is the agreed upon solution that was arrived at four years ago and recently amongst you and the chief of police and the city manager, is it working or is it not working?
Any good leader will tell you that when they feel that they're backed into a corner, they're going to have to go with what the majority decision is.
So you didn't agree with the solution that was...
I did not then, do not now.
Does the fire marshal currently carry a firearm?
No, ma'am, he's not qualified to. He has to have law enforcement powers to do that.
And does he have to be trained to carry a firearm?
That is a ten-week class that he will attend, that he's actually at now, and that is three weeks of training for that.
This is Carol Lindahl. I have a, I just wanted to make sure I understood you. You're saying even though you said it was fine with you, it never was fine with you now, not then, not now, not ever? Is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't say that I said it was fine with me. That was not what I quoted.
What did you say? That's what I'm trying to get clarification on.
I agreed to continue with the current agreement as it is until we could come to a better solution.
And is that the same thing you thought four years ago?
Actually, it dates back to about ten years ago.
About ten years ago?
So yes.
Councilmember Holmes.
How would this affect our liability insurance? Would this change the city's liability insurance since we were using people that were not police officers? And would the police training for the fire marshal and yourself, would that be, I mean, assistant, would that be just three thousand dollars? Wouldn't you have to take train to be a policeman also?
No, sir. They're only qualified in Title Twenty-seven and Title Nine of the Code of Virginia. So they're only, they can't do traffic stops. They can't do anything like that. They can only investigate fires, explosives, and things such as that. And I think that's where a lot of confusion comes in too with this.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
The only other question I had was, have we had any incidents where anything has been corrupted? I've never heard of anything in the six, seven years I've been here, but, you know, you know, I've never heard of any problems with the way it was working now, so I just, you know...
No, there hasn't, and I think it's trying to be construed that it has been, but it has not.
Fire Chief Garber, you had indicated that you had agreed to the status quo until, in your words, you believe a better solution would come along. Do you believe this to be a better solution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So this is...
This is Carol Lindahl.
Councilmember Doll.
I think you should ask the same question of Chief Williams.
Well, considering that it's going to be Fire Marshal Perry Weller, that's why I directed the question to our fire chief. But Councilmember Doll, if you would care to ask the question, feel free.
He's coming to the dais.
He's coming. Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, Chief Williams, I'm sure you heard the question that Mayor Oaks asked. And so I thought, since both of you were involved in the decision-making ten years ago and four years ago, or whenever all this happened, and just wanted to get your thoughts on it.
Well, we, I think the fire chief and I can agree that we've had a good working relationship in arson investigations and anything that we've done, actually, training. And we look at, we plan on continuing that good working relationship with, whether this passes or it does not pass. Is it, you know, is it the right thing? I don't know. It's limited in scope, obviously. Arson investigations, threats to burn, explosives, things that we don't deal with a whole lot. We've got our police officers who have been trained in arson investigation, and we worked pretty closely together. I was just talking to the fire chief, and we've got a potential thing going on right now. But, you know, we will do the best we can. I think there are a lot of things, you know, the devil is in the details, right? And so there clearly needs to be a strong memorandum of understanding that we need to work through. And unless the fire department is going to get an evidence room, then they're going to have to use our evidence room for whatever evidence they have. Unless they're going to get firearms instructors, they're going to have to probably qualify with us. And if they use force, then that's probably going to be incumbent on me as the subject matter expert in the police department on use of force. I wouldn't, I was telling the fire chief that, you know, I don't know anything about fire origin, and he doesn't know anything about, you know, use of force. So we're going to have to get there and do the best. And if that makes it better, then moving forward, then that's what we'll do. And if not, I don't, you know, I don't think that there's anything here that's totally broken. I think, I think we do, I think the police department works on a very high level, and I think the fire department does as well, and I think we work well together. And we'll just continue that moving forward, whether they're carrying firearms or not. I will say that, you know, carrying firearms is a high liability thing. And when I lay my head on a pillow and I try and sleep at night, knowing that I've got fifty-three people that everywhere they go has a firearm twenty-four seven, it's hard to sleep. And so if this passes, Chief Garber, welcome to that, you know, to that club. So it's important, you know, and the world is ever-changing in that the training is going to be a key as well, you know, and all that stuff. So very long-winded, I hope that answered your question.
I have another question, please, Chief Williams.
If we can have one more question, we're way over time. Councilmember Mead.
I had a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, the chief characterized the agreement as him having been backed into a corner? Would you characterize that conversation the same way?
I don't remember it that way. But, you know, perception, you know, obviously people are in a room and their perceptions are different. But I was, that's not my, that's not the way I perceive it, either now or four years ago or ten years ago, but...
And Councilmember Holmes.
I would have questions too about how the chain of command works. I mean, you know, you're the chief of police, so if it's a policing action, you should be at the top of that chain. Because I know in the military, you know, you don't want to have a whole bunch of chiefs and not enough, you know, troops, you know. So I just, I don't know how, if y'all could figure that out, I would, that would be one of my major concerns.
Oh, we absolutely, and we've got that figured out now. I mean, when we go to fire scenes, you know, they're in charge of the fire, and we're in charge of everything else. And when it becomes criminal, then it's murders a little bit, you know, and we're working together. But now, we've got that figured out on the front end. And like I said, the MOU that comes out of this, if we go down this road, will be critical. And the training piece for the fire marshal moving forward, I think it'll be important for them to, they're not, I understand they're not going to be full-blown police officers, but they're going to be carrying firearms. And so they're going to be in contact with citizens. And the use of force training that we do, they're going to need to get integrated into that and make sure, because, you know, carrying a firearm doesn't solve problems. It tends to add to the problems that you have. And so we just need to make sure that our fire marshals are well-trained and moving forward. And like I said, Chief Garber and I will work on that MOU along with city attorney, make sure that we get the way it needs to be. Thank you all for your time.
Right, thank you. All right, so this is item number four on the work session. It will also be item H under the regular agenda. So if you have any additional questions, you can ask at that time. All right, the next item on the agenda is item number five on the work session, item E on the regular agenda, a discussion of a request by Stanton, Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity for the waiver of fees related to the construction of four new homes on Stafford Street. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. You have before you a request for a fee waiver from Habitat for Humanity for these four homes to be constructed. Under the city code, there are provisions for these exemptions to be granted when an organization satisfies three qualifying criteria. And the exemption or waiver is available for water and sewer connection and facility fees. It's also available for building permit fees. For these homes, it's presently estimated that the water connection and facility fee to be waived would be fourteen hundred dollars per unit. The sewer connection and facility fee to be waived is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars per unit. And the building permit fees in the aggregate for all four units is about two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have received documentation... Uh, we have received documentation from Habitat for Humanity establishing that the criteria under the city code are satisfied. And so this will be before you during your regular meeting for your consideration. I do note that, um, Brad Erwood and Lance Barton, the, respectively, the Chief Operating Officer and the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity are in the audience. If council members have any questions for them.
Are there any questions? Right. Would you gentlemen like to address the council at this time?
I, this is Brenda Mead. I have my button on mute. I, I do have some questions, and I, I'm sure that, um, the folks from Habitat will be able to answer them when they get to the podium.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Brad Erwood, Chief Operations Officer for Habitat for Humanity. Happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Mead.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Brad, how you doing? Brad, what, what will be the, the, what is the value of the four homes that you are proposing to build?
Well, uh, in the end, uh, when we, uh, actually, we have to do an appraisal at the end, a regular real estate appraisal to determine the actual market value of the houses. And that's how we base, uh, you know, how we, uh, present these to the, uh, new owners of the houses. And, uh, we end up subsidizing to some extent based on their, um, you know, average, based on the average median income of the area as well, and how they compare in that. So the value of the houses, I mean, I can tell you guess about how much they're gonna cost us to build. But yeah, uh, let's see, the, um, two of them will be, will cost us about 65 for material, materials and construction, and about, I would say 12 for, uh, land preparation. Uh, one of them will be about 50, uh, for materials and construction on that one. That'll be the one, uh, that's being done for us by Valley Votech. Um, and that will probably be also about 12 for, for, um, preparation to land there. The last, the fourth, we're still determining that one. That one's gonna be a bit higher. It'll probably be about 95 to 100 on that. Our executive director is sneaking up behind me to answer more questions.
To, to give some clarification, these particular houses that we're asking for are small footprint houses made specifically for elderly aging in place. They're smaller units, completely accessible, not the typical habitat house that we're building now, which is valued at about $175,000 for the last three houses that we built in that same area. These are going to be less expensive for us, for a different purpose. We are finding that the need for affordable elderly housing outnumbers the need for, uh, young family housing, uh, in some instances, 10 to 1.
Thanks. Councilmember Claffey.
Madam Mayor. Gentlemen, is there a, a length of term required to keep the house before they can turn it over or sell it? Or in the event of elderly people, if they were to pass away, does it become, does it get passed over to, you know, their heirs and, and can they sell it for a profit, you know?
I appreciate that question because there's a lot of confusion as, as to what, uh, what it is after a certain amount of time the, the homeowner is able to do. Habitat creates deed restrictions in the sale of every single house that we build. And they will vary from, uh, a recapture where as long as they stay in the house and make on-time payments, the subsidized part of the house is reduced. If at any moment they sell the house during the 30-year term of the loan, uh, they are responsible for both the first and the second, which is the subsidized mortgage. Meaning there is great incentive not to sell the house and flip it. And, and they are protections, especially in a volatile real estate market going up and down. Those protections are in place because, to be perfectly honest, Habitat got hit hard in 2008, when everything started to explode. So we've, we've since learned and, and put safeguards into place.
Thank you very much.
And yes, you can pass it on to a direct family member when it comes to aging in place, which is an important one for us. So far, most of the aging in place have agreed to return the home to the affordable market when they pass away.
All right, thank you. Any additional, Councilmember Holmes?
This will have a lot of effect on the whole neighborhood. I mean, you know, I know when y'all built the ones up on Johnson Street, that's way a long time ago, but that area was, it was really rough, and it really changed the whole, that whole area. So I think it's a, a good thing, so.
Over the years, we've, we've come to, uh, learn that, that we're very important in neighborhood building, and we try not to do just spots as well in there because, and in this area, we're, we're doing entire blocks, uh, on the, uh, in the Stafford and Johnson and also Hyde and Reich area, uh, there as well. I welcome many of you who would like to come down and, uh, and tour the area as well, to see what we're doing, what we have planned next.
This is Brenda Mead again.
Councilmember Mead.
I took a few minutes to look at the, what is currently on the city real estate assessment site. Are those derelict homes still on the sites, or have they been razed as yet? That's part of the process of preparing the land?
These, these are currently empty lots. If you, it's still on Google Earth, it's like street view, you still see the derelict homes, uh, sitting there, but they are gone. And, uh, they are, we are about to start work on these four lots.
Yeah, they're all staked out, I saw.
Yes, they are. We like to be ready.
That's great, thank you.
All right, thank you. And this will be item E for consideration on the regular agenda. That takes, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, that takes us to item number six and F, six on the work session, F on the regular agenda, the discussion of uncodified emergency ordinance. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me note before I make some brief comments that this may be an item where the discussion actually spills over due to the time restrictions-
Thank you.
-to the regular meeting. This item is on your agenda this evening to determine whether to further extend the remote meeting procedures under the city's continuity of government ordinance, first adopted on March 18, 2020 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The ordinance was last extended on February 11, 2021, and expires tomorrow, April 9, 2021. In your agenda materials and a subsequent email, we've provided several alternatives for your consideration. For those of you in chambers, hard copies are at your seats. The alternatives fall on a continuum, ranging at one end from a complete extension of the procedures to, at the other end, their complete repeal. See y'all searching for documents. Do you not have hard copies?
No.
No.
I, I apologize. I, I thought that we had made the arrangements for you to have those. In, in any event, there's a continuum.
Okay.
At one end, uh, a, a complete extension of the procedures, and at the other end, their complete repeal. And then some of the other options fall in the middle on the continuum. Dr. Laura Carnegie with the, uh, Central Shenandoah Health District is with us this evening, um, joining us from the Charlotte Airport. Thank you, Dr. Carnegie. And will first provide an update concerning current conditions in Stanton and surrounding areas. Once you've heard from her, City Attorney John Blair will share with you some observations about a provision of the state budget relevant to your consideration of this matter. You'll then have an opportunity to discuss possible action to be taken by council. If there is a consensus among council members as to how to proceed, the matter is included on your regular meeting agenda for your consideration. We will provide an appropriate motion that reflects that consensus. And I'd now like to invite, uh, Dr. Carnegie to provide to you uh, the, the update on current conditions in Stanton and the surrounding areas. Dr. Carnegie, thank you for joining us.
Welcome, Dr. Carnegie.
Sure, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, wonderful. Thank you so much for, for having me. Um, I'm excited to provide an update on COVID-19 situation in Stanton and our district. You know, the good news with cases is that, um, our case counts have stayed relatively steady. Um, we saw a large, um, peak around the, um, New Year, um, that has come down nicely. However, it's not continued to come down. We've kind of hit, uh, hit a new plateau point, um, where cases have just stayed steady, but not continued, um, to decrease. Luckily, we've not seen the surges, um, in Virginia that some, um, other states, such as Michigan, New York, and New Jersey are currently seeing. Um, we're also having great success with our vaccine, um, response. We will be entering, um, actually tomorrow, um, into phase two. We've, uh, completed, or at least had an opportunity to invite people to clinics in phase, um, 1A, um, 1B, and 1C. Uh, we're starting to see a decline in the number of folks coming to those clinics. So we'll be opening up to phase two tomorrow, which will basically be, um, anyone 16 and above. Um, the state and the federal government have asked the state to, um, look at a timeline to enter phase two by, um, April 18th. So that was the general goal that we're going, we were going for, but we've been able to open up a little bit earlier. Um, in terms of vaccine response, um, at the health department side, we've, um, provided well over 50,000, um, vaccines, um, throughout the district. And our first dose and, um, total vaccinated dose has, um, been at or above, um, the state, um, benchmarks. So we're, um, happy where we're at at this point. Um, the goal that we're going for with vaccine response is obviously that herd immunity, um, trying to get at least, um, 75 to 80% of, um, Virginians vaccinated, um, and particularly trying to get that done before we see, um, recurrent surges, um, particularly surges that could be related to, um, variant strains. Um, we've got a ways to go with that, you know, opening up to phase two and having increased vaccine supplies is certainly gonna help us, um, get there. But we fully anticipate being, um, quite busy with vaccine response, um, over the coming months. Um, obviously, one large age group that we've not even approached yet are our children. Um, all of the vaccines that are currently available now have emergency use authorization only for age, um, 16 and above. Pfizer, um, is getting ready to submit, um, to the FDA authorization for age groups 12 to 15. Um, and the, you know, the results of those trials look, look very promising. So hopefully over the summertime, we'll be able to, um, uh, address the needs of our younger, um, population. Um, until we get to the point where we do have, um, herd immunity, we really still want folks, um, sticking with mitigation strategies, um, wearing masks, um, socially distancing, um, washing hands. Um, a lot of the updated CDC, um, guidance in terms of gathering, um, takes vaccine, um, doses, um, into effect. That is, if people are fully vaccinated, have had, um, two doses of either Pfizer or Moderna, um, and they're 14 days past that second dose, or have had one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, then are 14 days, um, past that second dose, um, the, the gathering, um, restrictions, um, amongst people who are fully vaccinated, um, have been loosened up. But in the general public, um, it's gonna take us a while to get to that herd immunity point where we're, um, more comping, um, restrictions in terms of, um, you know, people gathering, um, in public. So, um, until we get down the road a few months, um, continuing, um, with a lot of the same strategies that we have been, would be really prudent, including, um, doing things, um, virtually, um, that lend themselves to that, that platform. So, um, that's, um, kind of a broad overview of where we are now. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions folks may have.
Are there any questions by council members? Councilmember Holmes.
About how many people do you think in our area has been vaccinated? What percent, uh, at least had one shot?
Um, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have my computer in, in front of me, um, right now. But, um, they're probably coming up on that, that 30-plus percent range who've had, um, at least, at least one shot.
And are you having, uh, any resistance in certain populations like the African-American or Hispanic communities to take the shots?
Um, we have had some lower uptake, but by the same token, we've had really good, um, response to, um, outreach and education. Um, in our Hispanic community, um, we, we recently completed, um, a lot of work with the poultry industry. Um, and there, there is a large Hispanic demographic, um, in that workforce. Um, we were really happy at the turnout. We got, um, probably about 40 to 50% uptake amongst the workforce in the poultry industry. And that compared to, um, initial, um, attempts in poultry industry in the eastern shore, where they were seeing only 5 to 10% or so of workers, um, willing, um, to get the shot. I think as time goes on and people see, um, more of their, um, their friends and neighbors getting the shot and not having problems, um, that's helpful to us. Uh, we also really did a lot of education, including, um, Spanish education, um, within the poultry industry to, um, play up the safety and efficacy of the shots. So I think all of those things, um, worked well. Um, I think our work going forwards, um, especially as we, um, continue to, um, invite more of the population to get vaccines, and we wind down some of these very large vaccine clinics, it's gonna be small efforts, um, and hard-to-reach and hard-to-access groups. Um, I think with our continuing efforts, um, we're estimating we'll probably get to, you know, probably easily that 65 or so percent, um, of folks, um, having received the vaccine. I think it's gonna be getting to that last, um, 15% or so of people. That's gonna take a lot of, um, you know, hard work on the, of the, on the part of public health. But really, um, that's, that's some of the work that we do best. So we're excited to be, um, focusing on those, those, those harder-to-reach populations in the coming months.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilmember Dole.
Uh, Dr. Carnegie, I, I noticed that the seven-day trend for our health, health district is a, a 21.6% increase, which is a little concerning. And I, I didn't know if that's that variant that's been discovered in Virginia that's more contagious or whatever. I, I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but, uh, that's the seven-day trend. And I was, we had been reducing, but now we're, it's a, it's an increase. So I, I wasn't sure what was causing that.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we may see and will need to look at really closely, um, over the coming weeks is, um, Easter travel. Um, I'm sitting in Charlotte Airport because I needed to travel for a family emergency. But had that not occurred, um, I probably would have, would have stayed at home. I can tell you, it's, it's quite crowded here. Um, and we do have some concerns for that, you know, that 14-day period after Easter and spring break.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carnegie. Anyone else? Councilmember Holmes.
Dr. Carnegie, uh, what are your recommendations as far as, uh, having Zoom meetings and stuff like that? Do you think that that's still a good idea?
Yeah, I think until, like I said, until we get to that, that, um, you know, closer to that herd immunity point, I think things that we can do in the virtual realm, um, especially that involve the general public, where everyone may not be fully vaccinated, um, would be really prudent. We're just, um, concerned about, um, you know, kind of returning to business as usual, um, a little too quickly. You know, we're really excited with where we are with the, um, vaccine response now. We're excited that we haven't seen, um, surges in cases that, um, some, you know, states in the, um, US have seen. But we have to continue to remain vigilant until we get, um, many more people vaccinated.
Well, I've, I've noticed a lot more people traveling. I mean, and I have a restaurant, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm getting a lot of people going north and south now, moving. There seems to be a lot of people moving around.
Yeah, there definitely do, there definitely are. Like I said, I can, reporting from the Charlotte Airport, I can tell you, there's a, there's a lot of people, um, moving, moving around, moving around here. So, um, I, you know, I think we have to just, you know, kind of continue, continue with our vigilance. I think the, the president was on television a couple nights ago talking- talking about, you know, kind of hanging in there and hopefully being able to do more come 4th of July. And over the coming months, especially with having more vaccine available, opening up to more segments of the population, we'll get closer and closer to, you know, that, that point where we can normalize things. But I think right now, things that we can do in the virtual environment, trips that we can put off for the time being, that, that would be the way to go.
Great. Again, thank you, Dr. Carnegie, and safe travels.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. All right.
I would, I would suggest that this is a good point to end the discussion and then to resume it with Mr. Blair addressing the, the budget provision. Once the item comes up on the regular meeting agenda, and then council members can have their discussion then about how they wish to proceed, and then move forward accordingly.
That sounds perfect, thank you. So with that, the work session is now adjourned. We'll be back-